Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, united, right, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order.
For May 2025, and I've verified it with the forum.
All right, comments from the audience? Nobody? Okay. And then we have Van Stephens, the Eagle Scout report.
So like you said, my name is Dan Stephens.
Well, grab your microphone.
My name is Dan Stephens. I'm currently a sophomore in high school, as well as a life scout in Boy Scouts of America. And I've come to you today to propose a conservation project for the walking trail. I'd like to put up two bat houses. This one holds up to 75 bats, while the other's a little bit bigger and holds up to about 100 bats. The way I'd put them up is either if I could use the light posts, I'd use a metal bracket around them to attach to the house. If not, I would use four by four posts that are 12 feet tall and then attach through screw most likely. Basically, I mean, all the costs will be covered by me. I just need the approval to be able to use the ground and stuff like that, that kind of thing.
Are these the light posts on the paved walking trail by Broad Creek?
Yes, sir.
Along the middle school property?
Yes, and you met with Mr. Calhoun, I believe, too, right? To discuss, or you have that plan to discuss with him?
I have that plan to discuss with him if I get this approved.
Yes.
So those are our light posts, then?
Mm-hmm.
I make a motion to approve. I'll second the motion.
Okay, all in favor? Raise your right hand. Okay, you forgot to say the most important part. This is your Eagles?
What? No, it's a conservation project to get to Eagle.
To, yes, to complete your Eagles, yeah.
But it's for bats, right?
Yes, bat houses.
Okay. We had a lot of talk about those bats, didn't we?
Yeah.
And are there a certain kind of rat bats, I guess?
Uh, no, mainly the bat houses work for all kinds of bats, so any of the bats that are mainly around Salem.
And so it protects them? Is that?
Um, so it basically just gives them a home, so it'll keep it around there, and it'll take care of bugs around Salem, stuff like that.
Okay. All right, we'll pass. And you made that?
Uh, no, I actually bought this, and then I bought the other one as well. But I was planning on painting them, like either a black or a white, or maybe a burgundy, whatever. I mean--
Black and gold's always beautiful.
And then you have someone who comes and checks your project in an interview process?
My scout master, Alan Tarr, would come and approve it, and he would overlook and oversee it while I finish the project.
That's really cool. Nice.
Really neat. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Next is Routine Matters. And approve the minutes of the executive and regular session from April 14th, 2025.
I'll make the motion.
Becky White makes the motion.
I'll second.
Ty seconds. All in favor, raise your right hand. Four zero. Approval of the amended agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Becky White makes the motion.
I'll second.
Brent seconds. All in favor, raise your right hand. Passes four zero. Approved claims to date.
I'll make that motion.
Ty makes the motion. All second. Becky White seconds. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes four zero. All right, approval of personal recommendations. Karen Berry, SHS Career Coach. Julie Rowe, Retirement from BSC Teacher at the end of the 2024-2025 School Year. Beverly Sweeney, Retirement from SMS Teacher at the end of the 24-25 School Year. Wilma Bowling, Retirement from the SHS Instructional Assistant at the end of the 24-25 School Year. Marilyn Gross, Retirement from SCS Bus Driver. Kathy Humphrey, Retirement from BSC Custodian, July 16th, 2025. Sharon Sizemore, Resignation from SCS Bus Driver. Leah Miller, Resignation from BSE Teacher. Casey Fields is transferring from BSE to SMS Sixth Grade Science Teacher. Amy Abner, Transfer from Sixth Grade Digital Citizenship Teacher to the Sixth Grade Social Studies Teacher. Brian Putman, Transfer from SHS to Seventh Grade Math Teacher. Lacey Durham, Transfer from BSE to SMS Sixth Grade Digital Citizenship Teacher. Jennifer Modlin, Special Education Mild Moderate Classroom Teacher. And Frank Mizak, Stephanie Dean, Todd Alexander, SHS Summer School Teachers.
So I'll make the motion.
Becky White makes the motion.
I'll second that.
Ty seconds. All in favor, raise your right hand. Passes four zero. Approval of ECA recommendations. Angela Wright, Voluntary Assistant Track Coach. Brandon Corbin, Seventh Grade Assistant Football Coach. And Tim Nice, Voluntary Boys Basketball Coach.
I'll make that motion.
Becky White makes the motion.
I'll second that.
Ty seconds. All in favor, raise your right hand. Passes four zero. All right, donations. Consider approval of donation to Brady Shrum Elementary from the following. Nat Miller Brown Insurance Services, $200. Lynx Clothing and Shoes, $200. Consider approval of donation to Salem Middle School for $100 from an anonymous donor. These funds have been requested to be used towards registration fees for the students attending the Great History Challenge in May. Consider approval of a donation to Salem Middle School for $359.40 from the SMS Concession ECA Account. Mrs. Shelley Smith would like this donation to go towards lunch on Wednesday, April 30th, during the eighth grade Washington DC trip. Consider approval of a donation of Salem Middle School for $550 from the Tri-Cappa for our SMS ECA STEAM account. The donation is to go towards a purchase of a drone and other supplies for the lab. And I didn't know Chalk was saying about that.
Oh, thank you. So Tri-Cappa asked to have a tour of our facilities at their last meeting in April. So we took a look at all the work that had been done at the football field, and then we visited the steam room at the high school. I'm sorry, not the steam room, the safe room at the high school. And they wanted to see the band and choir areas. They were extremely impressed with the state-of-the-art facility there. And then we headed over to the steam room at the middle school, and that's where they held their meeting. But they were also given a presentation by Jessica Morgan, and they were very impressed there as well with the space. And it was a surprise that we had these donations waiting for us, so it was really nice.
Nice. Consider approval of a donation to Salem Middle School for $1,000 from Leader One Financial Corp. This donation is to help cover registration fees for SMS students attending the Great History Challenge in May. Consider approval of a donation to Salem Middle School for $550 from the Tri-Cappa. This donation is to help cover registration fees for the SMS students attending the Great History Challenge in May. Consider approval of a donation to Salem Middle School for $200 from an anonymous donor. These funds have been requested to be used towards registration fees for students attending the Great History Challenge. Consider approval of a donation to Salem Middle School from the following. Salem Title Corporation, $200. El Camino's, $134.70. Thomas Cypher's PC Attorney at Law, $200. Consider approval of a donation to Salem Community Schools for $150 from the Washington County Retired Teachers Association to be used by Logan Conquerham at Brady Shrum Elementary. Consider approval of a donation of a stove and a refrigerator to the Salem Middle School FACS Room by an anonymous donor. Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Brent makes the motion. Ty seconds. All in favor, raise your right hand. Passes four zero. Action items. Consider appointment to the Washington County Community Foundation Board.
We have Julie Johnson here.
Okay, okay.
Good evening. Every year, the Washington County Community Foundation asks each school board in the county to make an appointment to our Board of Directors. The appointments are vetted by our nominating committee, and this year, our nominating committee is recommending Sherri Briscoe for reappointment. Sherri has already served one three-year term on our Board of Directors, and she is an outstanding board member, very involved in several of our committees, and also looking forward to serving our community through her sponsorship, or her membership on our Board of Directors. So our nominating committee recommends Sherri Briscoe.
I'll happily make that motion.
Okay, Ty makes the motion.
I'll second.
Brent seconds. All in favor, raise your right hand. Passes four zero.
Thank you. And I just want to highlight the partnership that the community foundation appreciates with Salem Community Schools. This year, we were able to award over $140,000 in scholarships. We awarded over $5,000 in teacher grants. We gave away, we had two book giveaways to second and third grade students whose classrooms are participating in the Happily Ever After Project. We have five members in our youth foundation, over $6,000 to the STEAM Club, $2,500 in field trips. We sponsored the yearbook Athletics and Drama, $1,200 to the Broadcasting Club, Salem Band, $462, and Aquatics 400, and we also sponsored Junior Achievement Cast and Dare to Care Food Bank. So we really appreciate the opportunity to work with Salem Schools, and thank you for another good school year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Consider approval of Life Spring Health System Agency for 25-26.
Yes, so this is our mental health services that are provided to our schools, and this gives us the opportunity to have a therapist work with our students five days per week in all three buildings, and then one particular day per week for our high school. And we'd like to continue that contract.
I'll make the motion.
Brent makes the motion. I'll second.
Is that just, can I ask a question about that? Is that just only one at the high school, like, sure?
No, it just depends on the need. We just have those five days available to all buildings, and then the high school has one extra day anyway, in addition to--
Because we had three days in the spring.
Yeah, I think it just depends on where the needs fall.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Mm-hmm. No, good question.
I second. Becky White seconds. All in favor, raise your right hand.
And I'll just reiterate, it's the same contract we've had previously.
Okay, okay. Approved four zero. Uh, Jana? Consider approval to move forward-- oh, sorry, I skipped. Consider approval of the Life Spring Health Clinic for 25-26.
And this is the agreement that we have with the clinic for employees and students to receive acute care.
Okay, all right.
So move.
Brent makes the motion.
Second.
Seconded by Becky White.
And again, same contract as last year.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Passes four zero. Okay. Consider approval to move forward with sanding and painting of the SMS and SHS gym floors.
I'll make the motion.
Becky White makes the motion.
I'll second that.
Ty seconds. All in favor, raise your right hand. Passes four zero.
Do you want to talk about it a little bit? Or just gonna--
Sure. I can.
So this is a project that's overdue, so we're really excited to be able to give the floors a facelift, and I do, I probably have a design, so it'll be kind of small to show you, but we can get these out to the public because they're pretty impressive. Just let me find them. I hope I still have them in this stack. So, yeah, there they are. I know this is little, but I'll hold it up. This is the high school, very vintage look and feel to it, so this is the design that we think we're going to-- can you focus in on that? Can you see it? Good. And the, and this is a rough draft of the middle school, and of course, this would be the natural gym floor where the white is. And I don't think that we're totally sold on this one yet. When we do have our final design, we'll make sure it's out there. And we did look into two different ways to do this. Hank is very knowledgeable on whether we should go with oil base or water base. Water base is a little bit more expensive, but it does prevent the yellowing that you sometimes see on gym floors, so we'll go with that one, and they're scheduled to be done sometime this summer after graduation.
Okay, let's see. Consider approval of an overnight lock-in at Salem High School, room 205, for the eSports Club on 425 with Dorian Meyer.
I'll make that motion.
Ty makes the motion. Second by Brent. All in favor, raise your right hand. Passes four zero. Consider an overnight and out-of-state trip to Orlando, Florida for the Disney Club yearly trip, March 19th through the 25th for 2026 with Mrs. Whitlatch.
I'll make that motion.
Brent makes the motion.
I'll second.
Becky White seconds. All in favor, raise your right hand. Passes four zero. Okay. First reading--
Oh, we got one more.
Oh. Oh, missed me, too. I'm sorry. I should put these glasses on, probably, but-- okay. Consider approval of the 25-26 handbooks for the Brady Shrum--
Oh, 21, too.
Do you have the new-- you might not have the new agenda.
Yeah, I do. I'm gonna put these on. Okay. Yeah, all right. Yep, sorry. Consider approval of student council and the art club elementary playground project. Somebody wanna--
All right, come on down.
Okay, so for this month, I am gonna be talking for the student council and our art club. They have a plan to help the playground at Brady Shrum. Student Council has done a lot of community service for our community and our school. They have done blood drives, food drives, community cleanup, school-wide events for the whole student body. They noticed that Brady Shrum has redone their playground, as we all know, and with new equipment, but they noticed a lot of like blank spots around the playground. And they also noticed that Eastern has posted about adding new stuff to their playgrounds, so they went to Mr. Blakenmaker and Mr. Gorman with this idea. They asked a group of students to come today, so there's some art club people over there to help this, and they spoke with some fifth grader, fifth grade students about additions they would like to see. And made like a different, like a, like a floor, like a plan, and that's what it will look like. With some ideas created was a map of the USA with a compass rose, cornhole boards-- With some ideas created was a map of the USA with a compass rose, cornhole boards, sensory paths, hopscotch, tic-tac-toe, four-square, doorboard, city map, this cloth filter, I'm only time with that, and then a walking path done by elementary school company. They applied for a grant, which was with Washington County Substance Abuse Council, with this organization for the grant. And it's just like to help them out with the supplies to make that happen. And then they would like to paint on May 27th and May 28th with possible other dates because it'll probably take a couple more than days than just like two days. So they're just asking for help to help our community look a little brighter and for the playground, not only for the kids that go to the school, but in the summertime when people visit our playgrounds. And that's like the color scheme that they are looking at.
I love it. I think it looks beautiful. It was, it's really cool. Good ideas. Yeah. Okay.
Would you care to go back to that picture? I've got to ask. There is a cow and an alien in the top right corner. What's going there?
Uh, I have no idea. That was probably them.
That's gonna be a mural.
Okay.
But the wall, I think the wall is actually smaller than.
Gotcha.
It's not gonna be like that.
I just wanted to make sure I wasn't saying that.
Where's the cow and the alien? I don't see it. No.
Top right corner.
Coming down is the, like, the light.
Okay. Oh, going all the way up there.
It's a UFO.
Yeah.
Got you.
I love it.
I was looking at the other. I didn't, okay.
How do you propose to get like the US map on there to scale?
We've already bought.
Stencil.
When you heard this, we will buy stints. That plays out.
Okay.
It's pretty big.
I don't remember.
That's not really very.
For those of, remember, there used to be a big map out there.
Oh, yeah.
I remember that well.
And then Carol, this cloth filter is gonna help us stencil out some of the other things. And the custodians are actually letting us use their.
Stiper.
Stiper.
Did you say that was the city of Salem up there, kind of like?
Yeah, we kind of did a small kind of layout of the, sort of the landmarks, some of the, like the library, the courthouse, some of those kind of things, Tex Mill.
And then underneath it is?
That's a target, like a dark kind of game.
That's the dark.
So they'll have some, they'll have some like bean bags and some different things like that that stay out there in a container, like a bin type thing. And so they, they can have different parts that will go along with the games.
That's really nice. Yeah, very nice. Yeah, so not only is it hitting the physical gross motor skill standards, but it's also hitting our academic standards, too, with the map and the compass rose and.
And the planets, the little circles there are some different planets, the solar system. So, yeah, there's lots of different little things that'll be little activities for the playground.
So the fifth grade kids who are sitting near the window will have an advantage when they take their test on the states and capitals.
I'll make the motion to approve. I will second that, yeah.
I want it. I'll, I'll third that.
Passes four zero. Okay. All right. Now let's do, consider approval of the 2025-2026 handbooks for Brady Shrum, Salem Middle School and Salem High School.
There are hard copies there if anybody does need time to check those out, but I think you've received them prior to the meeting.
And the Disney book is there.
And the Disney book, too. Also, if anybody has any questions about the Disney.
Okay. Can I get a motion for that?
I'll make the motion.
Becky White makes the motion.
I will second that.
Ty seconds. All in favor, raise your right hand. Passes four zero.
All right, now the first reading, and I will try to make this quick, so we have a lot of them. This is to update volume 34, number two. So the first policy is 1,01213.01, Student Staff Relations. It begins with, "School Board Wants to Maintain a Safe and Healthy Educational Environment for Students Attending the School Corporation." And it ends with, "Disciplinary action up to and including termination may result from violation from the above stated boundary invasions." Boy, that's a big jump, isn't it? Okay. 1,216, or 1216. "The School Board believes that administrative staff members set an example in dress and grooming for their staff and students to follow." And it ends with, "The established standards for dress and grooming shall be upheld in a nondiscriminatory and uniform manner." Revised Policy 2221, Mandatory Curriculum. "In compliance with the Indiana Code and federal law, the School Board directs the superintendent to prepare, implement, and supervise courses of instruction in the following areas as stipulated in Indiana Code and the regulations of the State Department of Education." And it ends with, "When required by law, the Board shall approve the course of instruction." Number 2260, A Revised Policy on Nondiscrimination and Access to Equal Educational Opportunities. "Any form of discrimination or harassment can be devastating to an individual's academic progress, social relationship, and/or personal sense of self-worth." And it ends with, "The documents, ESI, and electronic media created or received as part of the investigation shall be retained in accordance with Policy 8310, Policy 8315, Policy 8320, and Policy 8330 for not less than three years and longer if required by the corporation's records, retention schedule." Policy number 2370.02, Flex Program. "The School Board recognizes the normal instructional program might not be appropriate for all students. Therefore, it authorizes the superintendent to provide a flexible school program for select students." And it ends with, "The instructional day shall consist of a minimum of three hours of instructional time." Policy 2600, School Accountability. "In keeping with its philosophy that the purpose of education is to facilitate the development of the potential of each student, the Board encourages the implementation of a strategic and continuous school improvement and achievement plan." And it ends with, "The superintendent shall establish administrative guidelines for use in the development of the strategic and continuous school improvement and achievement Policy 5111, This is the determination of legal settlement and eligibility for enrollment of students without legal settlement in the corporation, proof of Indiana residency. "The School Board establishes the following policy for determining student eligibility to attend the school of this school corporation." And it ends with, "Students without legal settlement in the corporation may be accepted into an alternative education program operated by the corporation, even if the corporation does not otherwise accept transfer students. The Board shall comply with Indiana Code 20-26-11-32 with respect to those students." Policy number 3213.01, Staff and Student Relations. "The School Board wants to maintain a safe and healthy educational environment for students attending the school corporation. The interactions between corporation employees and its students are paramount concern. This policy addresses appropriate boundaries between corporation employees and its students." And it ends with, "Disciplinary action up to and including termination may result from the violation of the above stated boundary invasions." Policy 3216, Staff Dress and Grooming. "The School Board believes that professional staff members set an example for their students to follow." And ends with, "The established standards for dress and grooming shall be upheld in a nondiscriminatory and uniform manner."
Hold on, there was, there was a question or anything. Let's say, understand that there are what policies in there that are for certified staff and there's some for non-certified staff. So that's, that's why you may have heard the same thing twice.
I heard the repeat. Mm-hmm. Yes, that one was for staff. And again, Staff and Student Relations, 4213.01. "The School Board wants to maintain a safe and healthy educational environment for students attending the school corporation. The interaction between corporation employees and its students are a paramount concern. This policy addresses appropriate boundaries between corporation employees and its students." And ends with, "Disciplinary action up to and including termination may result from the violation of the above stated boundary invasions." And that one was staff. New Policy 4216, Support Staff Dress and Grooming. "The School Board believes that support staff members set an example for the students in the school corporation to follow. The established standards for dress and grooming shall be upheld in a nondiscriminatory and uniform manner." An update to number 5511, Dress and Grooming Again. "The School Board recognizes that each student's mode of dress and grooming is a manifestation of personal style and individual preference. The Board will not interfere with the right of students and their parents to make decisions regarding their appearance, except when their choices interfere with the educational program of the school corporation." And it ends with, "The established dress code shall be upheld in a nondiscriminatory and uniform manner." We have a technical correction to Policy 5340.01, Student Concussions and Sudden Cardiac Arrest. "It is the policy of the School Board that the risk of student injury be considered and addressed in the planning and implementation of every student activity sponsored by the An update to Policy 5460, Graduation Requirements. "It shall be the policy of the School Board to acknowledge each student's successful completion of the instructional program appropriate to the achievement of school corporation goals and objectives, as well as personal proficiency, by awarding a diploma at fitting graduation ceremonies." And it ends with, "Commencement exercises will include those students who are eligible for a diploma, certificate of achievement, or certificate of course completion as certified by the high school principal." Policy 5722, It's a revised policy, School-sponsored Student Publications and Productions. "The School Board sponsors student publications and productions as means by which students learn, under adult direction and supervision. The rights and responsibilities inherent when engaging in the public expression of ideas and information in our democratic society." And it ends with, "Non-public form of student expression may be published, performed outside the school community to the general public." An update to Policy 6114, Cost Principles Spending Federal Funds. "The superintendent is responsible for the efficient and effective administration of grant funds through the application of sound management practices. Such funds shall be administered in a manner consistent with all applicable federal, state, and local laws, the associated agreement assurances, program objectives, and the specific terms and conditions of the grant award." And ends with, "For both state-administered and direct grants regardless of the period of availability, the corporation shall liquidate all financial obligations incurred under the award, not later than 90 days after the end of the funding period, unless an extension is authorized." An update to Policy 6325, Procurement Federal Grants and Funds. "Procurement of all supplies, materials, equipment, and services paid from federal funds or school corporation matching funds shall be made in accordance with all applicable federal, state, and local statutes and/or regulations, the terms and conditions of the federal grant, and the School Board policies and administrative procedures." And it ends with, "The corporation shall maintain records sufficient to the detailed history of all procurements." An update to Policy 6110, Grant Funds. "It is the objective of the School Board to provide equal educational opportunities for all school corporation students." And it ends with, "Unless it has received prior approval to use a different method or the terms and conditions of the grant authorize a different method, the corporation uses the deduction method of accounting for program income." A technical correction or update to Policy 8330, Student Records. "In order to provide appropriate educational services and programming, the School Board must collect, retain, and use information about individual students." And that's it because it's technical. And then we have a new policy, 8450.01, Protective Facial Coverings During Pandemic Epidemic Events. I hope we never have to say that again. "Due to the rapidly evolving nature of the COVID-19 pandemic and regulations adopted by various public agencies, the Board is encouraged to communicate with its legal counsel regarding the Board's obligations, rights, authority, and order under the Indiana law as it relates to facial coverings." And ends with, "School nurses or staff who care for individuals with symptoms must use appropriate personal protective equipment provided by the corporation in accordance with OSHA standards." An update to Policy 8500, Food Service Program. "The School Board will provide cafeteria or serving facilities in all schools where space and facilities permit and food service for the purchase and consumption of lunch for all students." And ends with, "All verbal or written civil rights complaints regarding the school nutrition program that are filed with the corporation must be forwarded to the Civil Rights Division of the USDA Food and Nutrition Service within three days." Policy 9150, School Visitors. "The School Board welcomes and encourages visits to school by parents, other adults, residents of the community, and interested educators. But in order for the educational program to continue undisturbed when visitors are present and to prevent the intrusion of disruptive persons into the school, it is necessary to invoke visitor controls." And it ends with, "If during a visit to a school or program, a board member observes a situation or condition which causes concern, she should discuss, she or he should discuss that situation first with the superintendent as soon as convenient or appropriate." And this is already in our bylaws, but it is an update. 0142.3, Vacancies. "The position of a School Board member shall become vacant upon the occurrence of any of the following events," which then it lists, and ends with, "The Board may interview no fewer than three prospective appointees unless there are fewer than three." And a revised bylaw, 0167.3, Public Participation at Board Meetings. "The School Board recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on corporation matters." And ends with, "No commentary is made that would distract either board or members of the audience." Done.
Okay. All right. Okay. Consider approval of useless and obsolete.
Okay, that's me. All right. So we do have a bus that the Transportation Department is wanting to declare obsolete. It's a 2015 special education bus and we've obtained a new one. It was actually inspected today. So we want to bring this before the Board and the intentions are to sell it.
Make the motion. Becky White makes the motion.
I'll second that.
Ty, seconds. All in favor, raise your right hand. Passes four zero. Okay, fundraisers, T's and Tumblr t-shirt sales for national finalists for Great History Challenge participants for eight, 25 through 516, 25 with Mrs. Autumn Hall. El Camino night, a percentage of the proceeds will go to the national finalists for the Great History Challenge participants. There's a silent auction for Raquel's gift cards, two for 25 on May 9th, race funds for the Great History Challenge participants. And then Norma Jean's is donated portion of the sales to help fund the trip to Orlando on May 7th from three to eight.
I'll make the motion.
Becky White makes the motion.
I'll second.
Brent, seconds. All in favor, raise your right hand. Passes four to zero.
We also have to.
And Jenna, can you quickly just give her a brief update on the affidavit?
Yes.
Yep. It was back on 25, right?
Yes, number 25. Yes, we got it.
Affidavit.
We got it. We got an affidavit for payment.
Oh, okay.
We need to.
On 25?
Yes.
Okay. Consider approval of the affidavit, affidavit, but for payment.
So move.
Brent makes the motion.
Second.
Seconded by Ty. All in favor, raise your right hand. Passes four zero.
I think we got them all covered.
So items from staff. No? Okay. Transportation update.
I think I already took care of that one. So, yeah, I think we're good there.
Any non-action items?
Need more business? I do have one. We are looking at the waiver days. Our flexibility waiver, our 1,003 flexibility waiver was approved at the last meeting of the State Board of Education. So we're really lucky and really excited that we get to add four days. Well, students will probably be happy, too. Four student days are going away and the teachers are able to come and have professional development with a focus on data, safety, and curriculum mapping. So we are proposing, we make a recommendation that we're going to amend the calendar and use the following dates for professional development. And the sooner we can get this out to families, the sooner our parents can make plans for their students to be supervised. These will be non-instructional days for our students. So we're looking at August 18th of 2025, which is a Monday, November 3rd of 2025, which is also a Monday, we're trying to keep it consistent, January 5th, 2026, I believe, which is also a Monday, and April 6th, 2026. So again, the teachers will come in person, everyone will be present for professional development, but our students will stay home and they will. And they will have 176 instructional days if this is approved.
I'll make the motion. Are we voting on that? Y'all make the motion?
Becky White makes the motion.
I'll second.
Brent seconds. All in favor, raise your right hand. Passes four zero. Okay, and then Superintendent's report.
I just have a couple of things. Really, thank you for your report. That's really exciting. We're excited to see the playground come to life for the kids. And then just a couple of things that we've been working on here in the office. We wanted to bring an idea to you that we would like to explore. We have talked closely with our financial advisor, Chad Blacklock, and looking at ways that we can generate more revenue because the only revenue we typically receive is when our students enroll in our ADM. So something that we can do that we would like to explore is the Trust Indiana. And the purpose of the Trust Indiana is to allow local units of government, such as a school, to invest in a common pool of investment assets, and it provides a convenient option for investing short term. So some advantages of this that we could do is we do have some money in our curricular fees, materials money. And we also have some money in our food services account. And we can put this into the trust and generate some interest, which then can be put back into those funds. And then if there is a time that we need to transfer from those funds to our operations or rainy day, that interest could then be transferred. So I believe the interest rate right now is 4.67. This is very fluid. We're not locked in. It can be put in and taken out the very next hour if we had an emergency situation. So we would like to explore this idea and see how easy it may be to do this and set it up. And we would just like to, again, just more have a blessing that we can move forward and try this out.
Just say at the Wilson Education Center, we do this. We've made over the past fiscal year about $30,000 in interest. So it's a lot better than most of the banks. And like she said, it's fluid. You can make a deposit, pull it back out. It's just like a checking account, really.
I'll give my blessing. I'll make the motion.
Becky White makes the motion?
I'll second that.
Guess it should have been under new business, huh?
Ty makes her seconds. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, passes four zero.
Wonderful. That's great news. So hopefully we'll make lots of money. And then this sounds really silly, but we do have to ask that we had a lockbox, and we were hoping there was a million dollars inside or some gold or something because it was very monumental and the climax was a big letdown. But we did have a lockbox at PNC, and we've since closed it. And we would like to open a new one at First Harrison Bank. So we just want you to know that we're moving that. And it houses important documents such as deeds. So no gold, no rings, no jewels. So but we will be opening that at First Harrison Bank.
All right. Okay, positive phrases.
Oh, I must mention around teachers and stuff, but I want to shout out to Mr. Sedser and his organization for the St. Louis trip. Mrs. Day and Mr. Albertson for the organization of the eighth grade trips. And I say trips because you had not only the Washington DC trip, but you had their new trip and things like that. Congratulations to the Lions four by 400 meter relay team. They just broke the school record. And so that's great news. Also Seth Ponsford, who broke the school record in the pole vault. So shout out to Seth. And also I don't know if you were able to go to, but Mr. Perlee in the FFA plant sale, that was a huge success, and that was good. And just teachers in general, we just had Teacher Appreciation Week, and our teachers do a fantastic job, and just so praised for our teachers.
Brent took a lot, and I agree with everything he said for the trip to go to St. Louis. And then the ones that didn't go, I love that they had other things for them, other alternatives to go and visit and do some field trips. And then today I saw a group, the first or second graders, anyway, walking to the library and back. And I just think it's so awesome that we've got so many great opportunities right here at hand, you know? And they're in walking distance and little, and at the end of the year, just fun things going on and great memories and great times. So I'm happy to see all that. And there's, last Wednesday I had a group on. And Jill, I don't remember, I mean, I don't want to leave anybody out, but every one of them was on point out of everything that they were doing. And so impressive, and so everybody's hearts are so good. It was really very informative. And it's just nice to hear what all goes on in the buildings. Yeah.
It was fun. It was really fun.
Also, we do have, I do have a card to read real quick. And Salem Community Schools, this is, thank you so much for the beautiful lantern, for the passing of my father-in-law. It was very thoughtful. And yes, to remember in this difficult time. Thank you for remembering us in this difficult time sincerely, Jill Myers. Thank you.
Of course, Honor Day on Friday, that was wonderful. So thanks to Mrs. Martin, because we know that that wouldn't go if it wasn't for you. So lots of work, and the Community Foundation too. So appreciate that. And then Mrs. Garlo, she's staff member of the week. So...
Do you want to go next?
I can't.
Yeah, go ahead.
That works great. So I'm going to kind of piggyback off of what Brent said. But I love that our school gives our kids the opportunity to not only learn in the classroom, but also develop friendships outside of the classroom. The St. Louis trip, they had a canoe trip, I believe, Washington DC. They went to Paoli Rockin Bowl, the fifth grade did. And then on top of that, I seen that some, I believe, I don't know which grade it was, but they went to the Salem Speedway for... Was it fifth grade? Okay. And I did see a picture. It cracked me up. The buses were taking the high bank, going around the track. But I would like to see them race. That'd be fun.
I've seen buses race before.
Well, you can, I think there's a bus for sale.
Right, yes, yeah. Is it because we took it around? But, you know, I love that we're giving them a lot of opportunities. So you guys are doing a phenomenal job.
All right. Like to thank Tri-Cappa again for those generous donations. It was really fun taking them around. I'm a Tri-Cappa member as well. So when they got ready to tell me all about Tri-Cappa, I was like, I already know. You don't have to tell me. So it was great. And that's an organization that's near and dear to my heart. So it's very active here in Salem, and we're really proud of that. Kindergarten registration took place, finally. We are at around 92 students, so we know there's more kindergartners out there. So if you're listening and you have a kindergartner, please, please, please reach out to BSE and get your student register. We don't want them to miss out on any of the activities that are coming up over the summer. The Alumni Banquet took place and was fabulous. I think we were up quite a few in attendance. And the Class of 1975 and the Class of 2000 gave great gifts. We have a beautiful fountain out front of the high school now. And there was a Technical Education Scholarship that was established by the Class of 1975. And prom also was a lot of fun. So I know there was a lot of planning that went into that. So thank you to the high school, and there were so many teachers there to chaperone. I didn't have to do anything. I ate and watched. So it was really fun. So thank you. And then you mentioned the plant sale. The greenhouse will be open tomorrow until 4:30. It's buy one, get one free.
I would like to say one thing. I got a compliment from a parent whose child, no fault of anyone, but had an injury. Apparently there are a couple of kids injured on the trip. And this parent said she was very impressed with the way our school corporation handled everything with her child and the level of communication. And whenever I get a compliment like that, I like to pass it along and let you all know that that's something that we need to remember[1731.86]